This meeting to order at ten after seven. The purpose of tonight's meeting is our work session to set an agenda for next Monday's meeting. Chief's not here?
No, he won't be here.
Okay. We start with the fire chief. Herbie, what do you have?
Um, just two things, three things. One is that we expect to hear on the carbon monoxide grants probably in the next sixty days. It's pushing up on that time where they should start making the awards on that grant. Second thing is, uh, we did purchase the NOx boxes for the fire trucks. Starting to have them installed and I just need to get with Mr. Dillon and Mr. Salerno concerning, um, the ordinance that I had submitted for the draft. And the third thing that I just want to mention was that the fire department responded to two really significant incidents in the past month. One was the building collapse and then the other day we had a serious gas leak on Race Street which actually required the, um, the gas company personnel to go down into the trench while the gas was leaking and with the fire department standing by. Both of those turned out without any problems.
That's great.
What's that?
Anybody have anything for Herbie? Jimmy? Mike? Anthony? Pat? Robin?
Came close, huh? Merrill was telling me.
Thank you. Anybody in the audience have anything before we started on some things? Anybody on this side of the room? Anybody on this side of the room like to speak? Tony?
Uh, Tony, do you have a mic there?
Yeah, can you walk up to the mic, please?
Tony, I am twenty seven, uh, twenty seven West Railroad Avenue. I just got, uh, three, three points to, um, I probably have a loop something that you might have already covered us, but the building that collapsed, uh, is that gonna, do you know if it's gonna be removed, fixed, or replaced?
Right now, it's in the hands of the engineers. The borough, uh, posted the building that it's unsafe. The only way they're gonna be able to occupy that building again is if they can get an engineer to survey the building and say that the remainder of the building is safe. If they can do that, then there's nothing we can do about it. We'll just then make sure they comply with all building and permits and things like that, but, uh, I don't know who, what engineer and company's gonna climb up.
I'm sure the borough's gonna take care of it. There's not many problems with that. I'm just trying to answer, just get this question asked, it's gonna lead into a couple of other things, but if the building's gonna be replaced or repaired or removed, uh, that's, that's gonna, that leads it to my next question, which is, uh, the entrance from West Railroad Avenue, which is in front of the, uh, what was the maintenance shops area? That wasn't fully paved, so the question we want to present is, uh, if and when the building's determined what's gonna happen with it, can, at that time, can you have the engineer look at, excuse me, look at, uh, getting the road to be more well-defined in that area, uh, i.e. like curving, and the sign still hasn't been put up, but that's not a big deal, but it's, right now, when you come off Old Route thirteen to get on the West Railroad Ave- Avenue from that end where the building is, you have to make a hard right and then a hard left, and a lot of it's gravel, and because of the maintenance shop and, uh, not really a good definition of where their property line ends, vehicles will be parked in and around the roads, you have to kind of meander through these vehicles if it's during the day to get to your street. So that was one, one question about the, reason about the building being replaced or repaired or whatever. And then if, uh, oh yeah, I'm sorry, I should get.
No, we'll look into that.
Okay. And then the only other thing I had to bring up was, uh, two or three weeks ago on Old Route thirteen, the, uh, shop, uh, the shop's name is four oh two Alpha, uh, four oh two A, Bristol Pike, it's the, uh, fire extinguisher shop and a mechanic shop that I think you had re- asked if it was okay for them to take the next big building next to them and it was agreed that they could lease that building or something?
Same as the end time?
I'm not sure. I don't, I don't remember any, I think it's John Aston maybe? Uh, he owns a small shop next to Marj- Marge Cullen, my house.
Uh, next to the old DeMarcus Building?
Okay, yes.
Okay.
So there's a big garage that's vacant and I think it was brought to the, to, to ask if it was allowed to let them use the next building, which I think they're getting ready to, but right now there's a big fifty-three foot mill van or Connex, I'm not sure what you call it. It doesn't have the trailer wheels, but it's dropped right on the property and it's kind of blocking, well, I, I used to like looking down the gateway to the, to see the trees and stuff going down into, uh, that part of town, but I can't, right now there's things like right outside my window, I'm not sure if it's temporary, or is it because they're gonna move into the next building or what?
Uh, two things. One is, you're saying that Aston Brothers is gonna use that for fire extinguishers?
Oh, I have no idea what they use it for. It's, it's been here for like two weeks.
There was a subdivision that was approved and you think they were gonna move into that, but the new owner of the property is not gonna apparently allow that to go through.
Okay.
And I think those trucks, they must've been inside and I know the new owners clearing everything and improving the inside, so that may just be a matter of him pulling them out there or maybe even trying to sell them out.
Oh yeah, I should. You were gonna, I was gonna.
Whatever it is, I would suspect it's temporary.
On, yeah.
The guy that bought the building, from what we understand, is a class-type operation and I'm sure he's gonna fix that building up and really make it look good.
Oh, no, it's actually, I'm, I'm, I probably misspoke. I wasn't talking about that building or the owner of the building, 'cause see, actually, we, if we see graffiti, it's gone within two days and, and he's being, he, he removed the truck 'cause they're outside a couple of days ago, but there's a red Connex or mill van, or you call it, this parked perpendicular in front of John Aston's building, uh, in his driveway. It's his property, but I'm just not sure why it's there, it's been here for two to, two to three weeks now.
Can we check into that?
It's a big storage thing.
We'll check into that tomorrow.
Okay. That's all I have.
The last thing before you leave, you said the sign out on Bat Street, Otter Street still hasn't been put up?
Right, that's correct. The, the old, the West Railroad sign, that's not, it's mounted on a telephone pole on Otter, but there was never one mounted on the, wherever the road's gonna be out on, on the Bristol Pike side.
That's something that should've been done a while ago. That'll get done this week.
Okay. Thanks, Rob. That's all I have. Thank you.
Go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was here last Tuesday night for the special meeting to approve the road program and listening to the engineers on how it's gonna proceed and things like that, I felt that we could get into a real problem with off-street parking as people are moving their cars out of garages, out of their driveways the night before to move them to some other streets so they can get to work or do their grocery shopping or whatever. I took it upon myself to contact one of the Board of Directors of the Calvary Baptist Church. They have two huge parking lots, one at the end of Nelson Court that extends to full width of Nelson Court, another one down on Farragut Avenue. Explained to him the situation with us doing a massive street rebuilding program and asked him if it would be acceptable if borough residents parked there while their street is being redone. And he was more than gracious and said, yes, absolutely. The only thing he didn't want was any big construction vehicles there, heavy vehicles on the parking lot, and he was just worried about Sunday mornings. I said, well, Sunday mornings, Saturdays and Sundays, there's gonna be no paving going on, so I wouldn't worry about it. So they were very gracious, said we can announce that they're welcome to park there, borough residents, that their streets are being redone, they could park there. You know, I'm sure it's only gonna be a day or two they'll be inconvenienced, but we have a place now, we can move some of these rather than everybody fighting for the street spaces.
All right.
And, you know, as, we can adjust it down more and more.
That's great.
And the only thing I would ask is perhaps America pass it on to the police department when we're doing this parking, is the police ride through there and check on the borough cars so we don't make a, a hit zone for the, uh, car thieves or anything.
Well, I know the contractor can't start before seven AM, so a lot of people, I guess, have to, I know the older people that aren't working and all, probably inconvenience for them, but, uh, you know, a lot of people are gone by seven. I'm sure we're gonna post the signs, but that's great that you talk to him and we have a complete parking lot to use.
Yeah, we got both of them to use. His name is James King, Jim King. I've known him for years, good people. So I approached him, he's more than cordial, said absolutely, anything the borough needs, they're welcome to use it. Okay?
All right, thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Joe, that's great.
Anybody else on this side of the room? Glad you showed up tonight. Got a minute to go to the podium? Uh, I was informed this morning that you dropped off another letter. This letter with several questions that you would like answered about my development again.
Oh, that development, some other property.
Well, basically, this whole thing pertains to my development almost.
Oh, pertains to the whole area, the split, other things, yes.
Apparently, the way I'm taking it, it's, it's more personal than anything.
Um, I'm sorry, you feel that way, but no, actually, it's not.
While you're here, let's clear the air and let's get all these questions answered.
I figure five days I'll get the response in mail.
You're tying up the manager, you're tying up.
How am I tying up? This is my right. I'm a taxpayer.
I know it's your right, so I like to answer these tonight for you and then maybe you'll be happy with it.
Well, I mean, you can answer them, but, I mean, I'd rather get them in writing.
Well, we will get them in writing, but do you wanna go through these and then we'll put them in writing?
No, I'm, I'm prepared to wait five days, but I appreciate it.
Well, I mean, you asked these questions, so you got it, the question that you want answered, I can answer for you.
I understand that, but I believe that's his job, so I decided I would wait five days and get his answers on paper like I did last time.
Okay, please come back once you get the answers, 'cause I really like to get this resolved, 'cause, I mean, basically, you wanna know about ground where I purchased, the borough purchased, about the track, so we can get this whole thing cleared one time.
I understand.
Okay?
Okay.
So you don't wanna do it tonight?
No, like I said, I'll wait my five days for my answers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, if they can get them ready in five days. Mr. Lux, what do you have?
A couple things. First of all, have, uh, we received the Pennsylvania Economy League report yet?
No.
I think it was due by the end of May.
No, I don't think there was any date set. We had hoped we'd get it, uh, May, June, but it's not finished yet. We haven't received it. Is there something in that, Jimmy, because you asked?
I want to read it.
Okay, no, I thought maybe there was something that you needed.
I'd like to read it. Um, my second concern is, uh, in, in going along with the road program, um, one of my concerns is, first of all, that the engineer tells us that those streets will last twenty years. I'm not so sure, uh, you know, when we overlay with an inch and a half of blacktop, that's gonna last twenty years before that loan is paid off. Uh, can the, or will the engineer get some kind of a warranty from the contractor?
Twenty-year warranty?
Oh, yeah.
No.
So there's no guarantee that the streets won't have to be done again before the loan is paid off?
There's no guarantee, you're right.
Okay. Uh, my second question is, uh, when the state did like Mill Street and Rackham Street, there was a five-year moratorium on opening the streets. Are we gonna have that same moratorium on the whole borough?
Well, uh, well, if it's an emergency, they have to open it. They already opened our streets.
So for the first five years, nobody can open up the streets in the borough?
Unless it's an emergency. If they have a sewer that breaks, if the water line breaks, what else would they open it for?
Fine, well, if they open it, what's their responsibility?
To restore it back to the, what's there?
Just the area that they dug up.
Right.
Well, we had that different last time. Okay. Next question, um, last month I brought up, um, Wilson Avenue, and there's a property on Wilson Avenue, when they hooked the stumps up, they destroyed the flowers. Now, the people that live there are still waiting for a reply and I haven't gotten one. Can I get the phone number of that contract? I'll contact him myself. No?
You have, I can get you that contractor's name.
Get me that phone number, I'll contact him.
I was told the contractor took the flowers out and gave the flowers back to the homeowner, Jim. That's what I was told. I mean, they didn't destroy the flowers.
Well, I guess the homeowner, homeowner has a different version of that. Um, also on Wilson Avenue, I have a resident, uh, actually, it's a church, uh, up by Wilson Avenue and Cleveland Street, they received a notice that they have to take down a tree. Is that something a building inspector is doing throughout town or just in a certain area?
Uh, I can't answer that question.
Well, here's my next question for the solicitor. In the letter.
I believe the tree is a dead tree, we got a complaint and that's why the inspector went out, but I'm not sure, if you can give me the address, I can confirm that for you.
Two thousand, I think it's two thousand eight, two thousand ten, church in Nazarene?
I, I don't know off the top of my head.
Or corner of Cleveland and Wilson. In that letter, um, and I thought this was kind of ironic, that, that they were requesting that they take down the tree and reminded them that they needed to get a permit.
Well, that there is no fee for the permit.
But didn't say that in the letter. Now, if the borough requires somebody to do something and then turn around and bill them for a permit?
You're not getting, don't.
That's not what the, that's not what the letter said.
Listen to me.
Is it bell sanger's, a bell?
That's what the, that's not what the letter said.
It said to come in for a permit. Let me ask you a question. You've been here with me for eight years, right?
Six years.
Everybody that takes down a tree, what do they have to do? After they take it down?
What do you mean, what do they have to do?
You take down your tree.
They replant?
We passed, we passed an ordinance that said, before you weren't allowed to take them down. We passed an ordinance, this council unanimously, including you, that said, if you have a sidewalk that's lifting or you have a problem with a tree, we're gonna allow you to take the tree down.
Okay.
And what do they have to do after they take the tree down?
Plant the tree?
Okay, so by them coming in to get the permit.
Oh, okay.
That tells them, here's the list of trees that you need, you gotta plant a new tree. That's all that permit's for. I don't understand.
They don't have to pay it. I just wanna, I'm.
No, they don't, but I don't understand why you, but why don't you know these things?
Well, listen, that's not what the letter said.
The letter didn't say there was a fee. The letter said to come in and get a permit.
Do they need a permit for a fence? Ralph, I'm not the building inspector.
You make these decisions up here.
The letter stated they needed a permit.
Okay.
And I'm asking you if they had to pay for it.
Now, can you put in the letter, there's no fee for the permit?
Fine, that, that's, that's great, Ralph.
Please.
On the, um, treasures report, and I see that, uh, Angie is here, so I'm gonna ask her a couple of questions. Angie, business card, I'm, I'm looking at the, uh.
What check number, Jim?
Uh, page two, it's under the monthly check recap report. Page two.
Check number?
Twenty-seven sixty-one.
Yeah.
Business card. F.C., what's F.C. stand for?
Well, first of all, you can only write so much in a line.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay? So it's, that's, you know, it has so many other, I mean, it could be, you know, Walmart, anything. That's probably, I don't, I don't know what F.C. means.
Well, you can pull that out in the next few minutes. What else you got?
Forty-nine hundred dollars, I don't know what it is. Okay. Uh, there's a miscellaneous expense there from the manager for six hundred and forty-one dollars. What's that for?
That is for his car allowance, his, there's two hundred dollars and then three hundred dollars. One's for a car allowance and one's for, um, three hundred dollars is for Mr. Dillon.
General expenses and.
And then the other part is for reimbursement of his prescription.
Pardon me?
Reimbursement of prescription.
Okay, but you have receipts for all of that?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Um, on the last page.
Council authorized a five hundred dollar allotment for me per month. Okay, remember that, Jim? And that's, that's.
That was about a year and a half ago.
Yeah, and that's the five hundred, plus it was about a hundred and twenty-one dollars for reimbursement on my medical, uh, payments, uh, per the contract.
My next question, I answered you on the last page, page six. Nicholas and Company. Four weeks, one, two, five weeks? Actually, it's even, yeah, five weeks in April. Every week you got a check for approximately fourteen hundred bucks.
I think I mentioned this to you the last time. Stefan Nicholas is employee contributions for their, um, pension with employee contributes. So there will be a check every week, you'll see.
Every week for how long?
Every week. It depends. It's six percent of their gross pay of that week.
Fifty-two weeks, fifty-two weeks a year, Jim.
Every week you get that kind of money?
We pay weekly.
It's employee contribution, that's what we contribute.
They're not getting the money.
It's an investment, it's their pension.
It's going in their pension.
We're paying it to somebody, are we?
We already went through this.
To the trust fee, to the trust fee.
We, we as employees, it's taken out of our pay.
That's fine, that's fine, just a clarification is good. That's all I have, Ralph.
All right, could you do me a favor and go find out what this forty-nine hundred dollars is for?
Do you understand?
Them checks that are written every month are the employees' contributions to their pension.
That's fine.
We're not paying anybody.
That's fine.
Okay.
Mike, what do you have?
I'm fine.
Anthony? Pat?
Fine, Mr. President.
I'm not so fine. Um, just wanted to know from the solicitor what the borough, is there a borough ordinance against raising pigeons in town? Do you know, Bill?
Why, you gotta know, I don't, you gotta know, raising pigeons? I don't think it'd be any different than having any other pets. Although, I don't think there's any.
Like there's just like a limit on four of them or?
Well, we have a limit in our ordinance. We do have a limit, but.
Would you find out for me? I've had some complaints, so I just want clarification. And, um, oh, and the other thing I wanted to mention is that last week I was, uh, at the Wharf when the East Coast Greenway, uh, came in and I was really, really impressed. If people aren't aware of what this is, um, it's linking paths, bike trails, walk trails from Key West, Florida to Portland, Maine. Uh, it's a nonprofit organization, it's pretty amazing what these people are doing. Um, and we've got some information, I believe, at the, uh, oh, here it is, right here, I didn't even notice it. Um, it's really very interesting and it's something I think that the borough as a whole should, should put ourselves behind. Um, again, this is, this is linking the, the entire east coast to make it more bike-friendly, walking-friendly, and because we're the kind of town we are with a bike path that people utilize constantly, I just think that I would mention it and we have some brochures if anybody's interested, they're always looking for volunteers, they're also looking for minimal funding if, if you're so, uh, so inclined, so just be aware. It's a great project, I think we should support it, and that's all.
Angie, you want me to start or you?
No, I'm fine.
You ready?
Yeah. The total check is four thousand nine hundred twenty-nine dollars and eighteen cents. There's Walmart purchases on here, chief purchased Dell computer software. The F slash C was four dollars and fifty-two cents and it was a finance charge of four dollars and fifty-two cents. So everything I put in the computer, it must've picked up the last thing I typed in, four dollars and fifty-two cents. F.C. is finance charge.
You wanna look at all them bills and see what adds up to forty-nine hundred?
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
This is like, I think we explained this to you several times, like the refrigerator that you said we paid all that money for?
Hmm.
Picks up the last thing she types in on the report.
Yes. Is that from Blonder's?
Yeah.
Yes.
Refrigerators?
Yes.
The two refrigerators, one is for, to keep blood or DUI evidence in, and the other one is to keep regular evidence in that's, goes back from the Caroline Dockerty case. They have to keep this stuff frozen and, uh, certain evidence has to be put, and they're both in a locked-up area. One's a little one and one's a full-size.
Okay. Angie, thank you.
Seeing here that it's not any good or?
No, that's fine.
You happy with everything?
Happy.
Thank you. Anything else?
No.
Okay. All right, I don't know if everybody had the opportunity to see the newsletter that Tommy Tomlinson put out. Basically, it's on home repair and improvement. Basically, it's a pretty good letter. He sponsored a bill that protects basically the homeowner from contractors who are trying to take advantage of people that, uh, senior citizens or people that they give money to and the contractor don't come back. And basically, what happens now, you have to, every contractor has to apply through the Attorney General's office for a contractor's license, and what happens is you gotta make sure you're insured, that you meet all the qualifications, you're a legitimate company. Uh, not that I want, I mean, this is the certificate you get back in the mail, this is my own, since I am a contractor, and here's my contractor's license from the Attorney General's office. So what'll happen is, if you read Tommy's letter, you can go online now to see what contractors are registered, if they ever had problems, if they ever tried to scam somebody, if they ever tried to rip anybody off, and he sponsored this bill. It's bill number act two zero zero eight. Giving law enforcement officials and consume more tools to protect against fraud. This new law will strictly police home improvement contractors and give consumers more information before they hire one. It's pretty good and, and just to let, the reason I'm reading it's just to let people know that sometimes they get things and they just throw them in the trash, but since I seen Tommy's picture on it, I may have did have done the same thing, but I end up reading it and I seen about home repairs, so it is good, it's good to protect people and you know you're dealing with a reputable contractor. The other thing is, uh, when we were walking around campaigning, we ran into a lot of people throughout the town, and, and there were a lot of complaints about different things, and I'd like the inspection department and our solicitor over the next thirty or sixty days to look into some of these problems that we came across. One is people with boats, RVs, oversized trucks, trailers, drop vehicles on streets, uh, that, we're in a, in a town that has a lot of tight parking now, and maybe we could look into something that says that you only can have a vehicle to a certain size. I mean, there are, and on Cedar Street, these people been complaining for years, and I know we've been dealing back and forth with the same tenant, but you have a RV that's gotta be thirty-eight, forty feet, you have trucks in the yard, pieces of equipment. I think if people wanna go into business and run a legitimate business, they need to go rent a yard instead of using the borough's streets for their own personal business. So I don't know what we need to do, but again, we need to look into how we can start limiting these vehicles that are, even in yards. I mean, you have a RV in your yard and the neighbor can't see down the street. The other thing is, and it's a personal thing that I always bothered me, was curb appeal. People with porches or front yards with trash cans that are bags just thrown in them, uh, trash bags just thrown out. I mean, if you're gonna keep your trash can in the front of your yard, at least put a lid on it and make it presentable so your neighbor doesn't have to smell that or have to look at it, or people driving through town have to look at this, uh, trash constantly. Trees on sidewalks. Go outside, there's weeds growing around your trees, pull the weeds. Trees on sidewalks, go outside, there's weeds growing around your trees, pull the weeds out. I mean, you have major roads coming through Pond Street, Ratcliffe Street, Jefferson Avenue, that there's mattresses thrown out two days before the trash company's supposed to pick them up. That's a reflection of our town, and no matter what we do, we can't police this whole town twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. We do a good job, but, you know, maybe we need to start enforcing this more, but I think people need to start taking pride in what their, front of their home looks like. The other thing is temporary signage. I brought this up a few weeks ago, people with yard sales. If it said there's a yard sale today, June first, well, on June second, that sign shouldn't be up there. You walked to the corner to put the sign on the pole, you should walk back to the corner at the end of the day and take the sign down. What we need to do is maybe have the inspector ride around, and if these signs are up a week later, cite them for that. Now, I know the first thing you're going to hear is, well, a lot of people can't afford to fix their home because they're on fixed income, or they're senior citizens. Well, I talked to, again, we never announced this on our TV channel, but there are programs out there, the Redevelopment Authority has a program for anybody that qualifies, and I'll give you an example. You can get up to fifteen thousand dollars to fix your house. New windows, new roof, paint your porch, new siding, a lot of things that can make your home look more presentable. And if you're a single parent, you could, single person, not just a single person living in a home, you can make up to forty-one thousand six hundred dollars. If you're a family of two, you can make up to forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. If you're a family of three, you can make up to fifty-three thousand five hundred, and if you're a family of four, you can make up to sixty-four thousand dollars. I mean, that's a combined income, that's a lot of money where you still apply for, you could still be eligible for this grant. Now, if they give you this fifteen thousand dollars to fix your house, it's interest-free, and you never pay it back until you sell your home. So, if you keep your home for twenty years, you have fifteen thousand dollars given to you for twenty years that you pay no interest on. And the Redevelopment Authority has a lot of money to give out to Bristol Borough residents that can go apply for this. So, when we say, you know, we want to see more curb appeal, there's no reason why we can't get this out of our town. We have a program that can help people that don't have the money, and people that have the money can go fix it. So, I just think that we have turned the corner, and I think some of these little things that are nuisance that needs to be straightened out, that I wish the people of Bristol would start, and it's not everybody, but when you ride down the street and you see trash cans out for three days after the trash guy went by, it's frustrating. Other thing is, large dogs. People have three-foot-high fence in their yard, and you walk through an alley and this monster of a dog comes over the fence at you, who's got, they have a spike in the ground for this chain, which you know the dog can rip the, the spike right out of the ground. But I like to look into some kind of ordinance that says if you have a certain-sized dog, you need to have at least a six-foot fence in the rear of your property, not in the front of your property. I had a phone call tonight from a gentleman who wants to know if he can be assist to our animal control officer. He doesn't want to be paid for, he just wants to be able to walk the path and have some authority that people who have their dogs mess on the path and don't pick it up, that he, he has the availability to write their name down, or cite them, or something like that. I told him I would talk to council, and maybe the manager can speak to him. He was a prison guard for, I don't know, twenty years, twenty-five years, and he now works for the county, so he's a knowledgeable enough person that wants to donate his time. He said it just drives him nuts when he's walking and he sees people just have their dog mess and not pick it up. The other thing is, we have been looking into permits, and it's something that we have started five years ago, and I think we have a handle on it, and right now, I think we have some flexibility to maybe back off of some things, and I'd like to get a meeting with John and a couple council members, and maybe start looking at not having permits or permit fees for windows, siding, roofs, sidewalks, driveways, things that are going to beautify a home. I think that if people are willing to put the money into fixing the exterior of their home, do windows in, new doors, new siding, new roofs, we should be able to waive that permit fee and have them go ahead and fix it. Now, if they're putting an addition on, or they're putting a driveway in that was never there, all that kind of stuff still needs to go through online and be looked at to make sure it's legal. But I think our inspection department has a good handle on what's going on. I still would like them to come in to make sure that they're licensed now through the state as of July one, and they meet all the requirements as a contractor, just to protect the taxpayers of the town. But I think it's time that if people want to start fixing their homes, then we should start looking at some ways to, to help them. I think the borough really loses money on this permit process, then makes money when you figure the time we have to process and what we have to do. The other thing is, the roads are starting on June, we're hoping on June fifteenth, there should be a contractors' meeting in the next several days to let us know what end of town they're going to start on, and how, we got to work the bugs out in the beginning, I'm sure, but all the roads that are being paved, I have started to walk my ward, there's some more alleys or some streets I'd like to consider doing. I hope the rest of council's doing the same, to come back. I think it's a good program, but I don't think we could get a better price, and I think now's the time, if we want to add to this program, now's the time to do it. The last thing I have is that for the last several years, there's been a movie night down at Lyons Park, and it's always been successful. Joe, how many kids turn up?
I think there's five, more than five hundred families.
Five hundred families, and they lost their funding this year, and I would like to ask council that if we would contribute not to exceed a thousand dollars out of our recreation program to continue this program. I think it's a great night for families and kids, and it's something that means a lot to a lot of people in town. It's either July seventeenth or July twenty-fourth. I know it's on a Friday night, and I know the mayor's been involved in this a lot, but I like to make it an agenda item, so we continue this tradition and spend a thousand dollars on this, or is that enough, Joe, you think?
Yes.
We can do it.
The bulk of the cost goes for the renting of the film and the screen and the audio system. Everything else, we have about fifty volunteers, beverages, popcorn, all that kind of stuff is donated.
Okay.
But, as you pointed out, the borough has sponsored, this will be our sixth or seventh one, borough has sponsored, I think sponsored the second one. Last year was a local insurance company, previous years, it's been the Exchange Club. Everybody's under tight budgets this year, but it's been really well-attended over the last six years, so anything that the council can do would be greatly appreciated by the people in town. Buck and a half, two-dollar cost per person.
Yeah.
The movie's going to be Madagascar, too.
I think it's well-worked, I like to see it, see it continue, and hopefully the, the people are watching, they pass on to their neighbors, start trying to clean the front of your house up a little bit, especially with trash and cans, and sweep your sidewalk, and the street sweeper goes by, sweep it the night before, we'll pick it up. Okay, Mr. Dome.
The, we're in touch with the county on the community development funding, they haven't received the funding from the federal government. This deals with the improvements to our playgrounds, as well as adding a, a new playground somewhere on the Jefferson Avenue recreational complex. The county has said that they would authorize us to proceed, or allow us to proceed with the improvements if council authorizes a letter to be sent to the county whereby the borough would front the money for the improvements to our existing tot lots. There are some areas out there that definitely are bordering on safety, and I'd recommend that, you know, council authorizes the letter to be sent.
Yeah, I like to see this happen as soon as possible. This, kids will be getting out of school in the next ten days. I like to make that an agenda item where we use our money and we'll be reimbursed. Just like anything else, you know, we have done with grants, we have to front the money, we know the money's guaranteed, it's for the kids, and I also like to extend this program, Jim, and see if we could start getting more lighting and things like that around the, the property, and if we need more swings. We have enough money to do this project with a lot left over, so I like to see some lights and things like that. Can I just, before we continue, show them this light?
Oh, okay.
Let me show you, show everybody, this is the new light. This is the new light, we want to put down Lyons Park to light up the whole park down there, and we're thinking about starting to change a lot of the lights in town to this look.
LEDs.
They'll be LED lights. Where's the one with the Bs?
We took that one off.
You took it off?
Yeah. There's especially, there's also a, an attachment that we're looking at, that we filed for a grant, we should know by the end of July or August, because our street lights, our decorative lights are like twenty-five, thirty years old, and
Right.
They can't be repaired, the number of them, so.
Like Jefferson Avenue and different areas that have these lights, this is the newest light out, and we also want to put these around the fountain, correct, out here near the new school. So, this is the look we're trying to get. There's another one that has a cage around, not a cage, a black lens, and it has a B in it, which would stand for Bristol, and there's freedom. So, it's a matter of how we proceed with this, but this is the light, hopefully we get in as soon as possible, Lyons Park.
Today, we installed one of them, the company, they're on the state bid list, they gave us two to, to look at. We installed one down, you get down the hill on Market Street by the theater, it's the light, we just installed it today, so if you're around town the next few days, you can look at it, but it's LED, you know, should last much longer in, you know, energy efficiency.
And what's great with this, our guys can do it, we have our own bucket truck, so we have our guys, we save all that labor cost that we were paying, we buy the fixture and our guys hook it up. So, it's, when everybody says, what are you doing with a bucket truck? It shows you how flexible and how much use we get out in this truck. So, this is the light.
And don't those LED lights shine a lot brighter than a normal bulb does? You know, we had that.
I think, what would, what would the hour, this astronomical, that?
We saw them look that day.
I don't have it, but it's. Might be like five.
We'll put it in the next newsletter.
Yeah, put it in the next newsletter, it was really impressive.
It might be like five or seven years or ten years before you have to change a bulb. I mean, that's how long they'll last, and they burn hardly any electric, and when you send these into the electric company, they start reimbursing your, your lighting costs. So, it's a beautiful fixture, and it'll, you know, really improve Lyons Park.
Okay, okay. The next item for council to consider is purchasing of another solar power school zone signal. There's a firm in Freudon that George Waldron recommends we purchase one from in the amount of thirty-nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. What we would do, the two existing flashing school lights at St. Mark's are in deplorable condition. We would move the one over from Jefferson Avenue to Ratcliffe Street, and if council authorizes this purchase, this will be the, for the other one for St. Mark's School. And so, it's recommended that council authorizes the purchase of this one solar-powered school flashing signal.
That could be an agenda item.
Yes.
So, we have the one coming from St. Anne's that we're not going to use anymore?
Correct.
And they'll have two new ones in front of St. Mark's?
Right. That's finished, then we'll, we'd be looking at placing two new solar lights up at the high school, but we just want to take one step at a time here. I have an appointment to the Historical Architectural Review Board for council's consideration. A copy of the letter was in your packet, and that's basically all I have, the solicitor has something on the zoning ordinance. Want an update on that? The zoning ordinance? The committee's been working with Bucks County Planning Commission over a year now. Council has received a draft of the news ord, zoning ordinance, and I know it's pretty thick, but you've also received about a ten or fifteen-page synopsis of the major changes. I would ask if you get a chance to go through that. On July sixth, the county planning commission will be coming in to review that with council. It'll be the, the public meeting also, and then we will advertise that for consideration at the August meeting. So, if you get a chance, take a look at the synopsis that had been sent out.
Before we adjourn, we're going to have to start discussing our trash contract expires at the end of this year, it's been a five-year contract. Trash has been picked up for five years with no increases, and we discussed about appointing people to this board to sit down to discuss how we want to put out the contract, what we want in the contract, you know, that we want to pick up the entire town like it was done before this contract, twice a week for the entire town. I know there have been people that were interested, so I'm going to appoint these people tonight, and then if anybody else is interested, they could contact the borough. Right now, it's Ellen Callanan, Michael Guerenda, Franny Duranzo, Don West, Susan Richland, and Donnie Crowe, Donald Crowe. If there's anybody else interested, Diane? Diane Hoffner? Jerry, you want to sit, sit on it? Yeah. Diane and Jerry on there, so anybody else? All we're going to do is we're going to sit down maybe one time, I'll show everybody the specs from the last contract, what's in it, how it goes out to bid, and if anything we need to change, we'll change it, and we'll put this contract out to bid. And again, so everybody understands, whatever the contract comes in at, it's divided by the amount of people that pay trash, and that's how you come up with the amount charged to each person. The borough is not allowed by law to make money or use that money for anything else. I mean, even though it's misconstrued on the street that way, but again, if it's a million-dollar contract per year, you divide it, and that's the trash cost. So, does anybody else want to be on that committee? Tony? Okay. That's it for committees. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Anthony? Second. Second.